Tonight is Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. It's a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to an end?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, please rise.
(Inaudible). United States of America, to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with a great justice.
Is Chris Moreo here, Mr. Collins?
No.
Will you hold off on that?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, I'm sorry.
I, uh, the, uh, in lieu of giving gifts this year among the staff, Carla and Lean organized a adoptive family. We raised $1,145 in less than one week. Twenty-one of us participated. You see all the pictures of everything that was delivered and all the people. And it was really a great effort on behalf of the staff. And it was great that Dr. Bailey helped us pick out a family. And we are very proud of the staff because it made Christmas for some families that really needed a little spirit at Christmas.
Yeah, pretty cool stuff. I mean, it's, I think it speaks volumes about the town and the people who are involved in the town. And I think this is really a classic example of why it's not a great thing to call into question government employees, right? I mean, I think it's really fashionable to say about people working for the government, they work for the municipality, blah, blah, blah. But at the end of the day, I think our folks really show what this town's all about. Thank you, Dr. Bailey, for helping organize that and get our end.
Thank you.
We're all glad to participate. Thanks to Carla and Lean for doing that. So, thank you. Hopefully, this will be an annual tradition. All right, next item, Mr. Brad Fish. Mr. Fish, are you here?
I am.
Great, you've got the podium. If you'd introduce yourself and explain to us.
How's everybody doing? My name is Brad Fish. I'm a Akushnet resident, have been for thirty years.
Okay.
Military veteran. I joined the Akushnet American Legion. And once I got involved with them, they brought up about being a Purple Hot Town. I've done it before, I've helped the Haven do it. So tonight I have Mike Jenny, a senior vice from the American Legion. Does he have that mic? Or raise your hand, whatever. I have Devin Rovatile, commander of the VFW in Akushnet. I have Albert Ardet, an Akushnet resident, Purple Hot recipient. Behind him, I have Richard Jansen, standing up, Rich? Double Purple Hot recipient from Akushnet. So that's why we want to make Akushnet a Purple Hot Town. These are the reasons. And the gentleman and other veterans here that are here to support the program, sorry.
Well, first of all, to all our veterans, thank you. Thank you for your service. What can we do? What do you need from us to make this happen?
All I need is for the board to sign off on that. The chair has to sign off on that one piece of paper, I believe you have in your packet. And that'll get the ball rolling. Then what I have to do is I have to email that to the state for a rep that I have, Mr. Jansen. And then they will ask us, how many signs do we need? I'll let them know. I gave you a list, I went around town. Could we try and put them at the entrance points into the town?
Yeah.
We can't do all of them. We'll be putting up forty signs, fifty signs, whatever. But all the major arteries, we try and take care of, which you can see, I think I got most of them. If there's anything missing, I'd love to hear about it. That way we can add to it.
Just a comment on number three. I would prefer that a Purple Hot sign not be under a sign that says littering.
Yeah, okay.
And you have an option for the dead end on that dead end street. So I'm very familiar with that area because I reside down that middle road over there.
Yep.
So I think to be respectful to all our veterans.
Okay.
And I would prefer not to be anywhere near a not litter sign. Thank you.
And like I said, I just try to do it to save the town as much money so the DPW doesn't have to do a lot of work. Places where we do need to put poles up, the state actually will give me those too. So it's just a matter of the DPW installing stuff, that's it.
And look, if you feel, and I appreciate you wanting to, you know, maximize space and what's here, whatever, but if you feel like...
There should be a dedicated pole.
Dedicated pole or...
Doesn't have to be, but I appreciate that. And we'll look at it again while I'll take out the veterans.
It's not money getting in the way of this. You know, I mean, that's, we've got celebrations, we've got, what do we got? A thirty-three-plus million-dollar budget, something like this. Because I like to say it'd be a rounding error. So let's make sure we do it, do it right. So whatever you need and where resources.
Okay, I appreciate that. And like I said, the sign supplies the states, the poles. I actually talked to them because the American Legion had talked to me too about a sign for, I didn't even know this, but we actually had a, I don't think it's called a park, but it would be a...
Right down the end of Main Street.
Yeah, it's down the end of Main Street.
Alden.
Alden Road. I don't know what you'd call that.
Thero?
A square?
Thero Square.
Yeah, a square.
Yes.
Thero Square. I had no idea it was there. Well, the sign was made out of wood, it rotted, it fell down. So I went to the state again, and they just actually emailed me today saying that they would make us two more signs for that area.
Right. Mr. Chairman, that was where the board directed us to move the sign because it was back and it was hidden from all the other signs. And at the direction of the board, the DPW went down there. And when we started to pull the sign out, we found out the condition it was in. And so then we've had staff talking to the veterans, and I'm glad they arranged that.
Yeah, the original sign was sixty inches by eight inches, and it was three-quarter inch wood. So that's why it was rotted and fallen apart. The state just emailed me, said they could only do a forty, fifty-four inch in length sign instead of sixty, which is not a big deal, by eighteen and one inch in aluminum. So, and they're going to give us two of them. So we'll have one for backup or one, the other one.
And look, we've got the Riverview Park down there. Do you see an area there that you want to...
And we can do that too. That's what I mean, I need the suggestions just so we can...
Be as creative as you can.
Move this along.
You know, if you're driving through town, gentlemen, you see an area?
Yeah, just let us know. Because it'll be probably another week before I actually put in and let them know how many signs we need.
Okay, great.
So.
All right, well, thank you. So what we will need is a motion to designate Akushnet as a Purple Hot Town. Is that Mr. Collins?
That's it, yep.
All right. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then once you get all that, let's, you know, let's have a dedication and do this the right way.
Right, and that's what we're gonna do. There will be a Purple Hot dedication done.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir. All I need is that one piece of paper signed by the chairperson, and that way I can scan it and send it on to the state.
We appreciate your energy.
Thank you, Brad. Thanks for your efforts and to all you who have served our country. Thank you very much for your service.
All right, very good. Our superintendent of schools and school committee here, keeping the good vibes coming. Discuss a video up for you? Major designation for the town and our school department.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly, good evening. Chairperson Monar and Board of Selectmen. I am here tonight on a very happy occasion. Our school district was recognized as an ESEA distinguished school national, at the national level. That's the elementary school. And why this is so prestigious is because the state recommends the schools to go to the national level. They only recommend two schools a year, and there's 2,000 schools in the state. So Akushnet Elementary, based on student performance and academic growth over the last couple of years, has received this recognition. We will be sending four staff members to Indianapolis for this national conference. We're super proud. I actually asked Mrs. Chesney, our principal, tonight to come and speak to you just to highlight, you have a sheet in front of you, just to highlight some of the areas that we've been working on. But I can't thank you enough and this town and the finance committee for all the support that you've given to the school because without the support, we would not have been able to get our new curriculum and all the wonderful things that we're working on. Our school district looks very different than it did when I started five years ago. And we're just really proud. So if Mrs. Chesney could come up, I'd like to ask her to highlight some of the things that we're working on at the school. And then after that, I'd like to show you a video of our school. We had to make a two-minute video that we're sending to the national conference. That was a requirement, but we're very proud of the video as well. So, Mrs. Chesney.
Just check it out.
Thank you for having me. As Dr. Bailey was saying, one of the areas that we were able to improve in our school was being able to get new programs for our curriculum in reading and math. You know, in part because of the focus and vision of Dr. Bailey, the school committee, and also the support that we have from everyone in the town, of course. So we really dug into that new curriculum in the past two years. The students, I'm sorry, the teachers also have a weekly support time in which they can talk about issues that either may come up with the new curriculum or with students. But I think one of the main areas that really helped kind of push us over that edge for others is the way that we did synchronous hybrid learning. So in many other districts, you would find that if someone was hybrid, the student at home would do asynchronous learning, and the students at school would, of course, have their teacher in front of them. But the teachers at Akushnet in the third and fourth, second and third and fourth grade had students on screen while they were teaching the students in front of them. And that actually happened come from another district that's actually quite unique and a testament to the staff that we have in Akushnet. We really worked a lot in the past couple of years on professional development, and the teachers have kind of come along on that ride with Ms. Pacetto, the assistant principal, and me, and Dr. Bailey, and all the staff in the administration, really working on growth mindset for students and basically looking at any of those gaps that may have occurred because of the pandemic. Did I forget anything? Okay, we can just look at the video. Thank you so much. If you have any other questions?
Yeah, if I could just add, going back to the pandemic, I have to give a huge shout out to our staff because we did ask them to do a lot. Most districts, I can tell you my own son was going to school three days out of twelve. Okay? So that's how it was in many districts around. Our teachers, our kids were getting as much school as we could possibly give them. We asked our teachers to teach not only to the children in front of them, which was half the class, but they had the screen and large TV screens with the kids at home so that kids would not miss. And I think that really made a difference for our district. So we would love to share this video with you. We hope you like it, but we're super proud of it.
Yeah, any questions for us?
That's great, I think just more of a comment, thank you. It's great for the town, and I think the taxpayers need to hear this, right? Because it's an investment. Every year when they go to town meeting and they get their tax bills, they want to know what they're getting for their dollars. And to show a third party, validate, right? The work that you're doing, I think, really is great. So congratulations for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good comeback story.
Thank you.
We're located in Akushnet, which is a small town on the south coast of Massachusetts. Our district is pre-K through eight, and our Title I school was pre-K through four with 49% of our students identified as high needs. Our mission is to promote students' success and growth in a supportive environment. We are focused on building a sense of belonging and creating relationships. Our staff and students are proud Wildcats. We have multi-tiered systems of support in place to address all learners. And our teachers collaborate on a regular basis so that they can deliver the highest quality Tier One instruction. We have a team of teachers, special educators, counselors, interventionists, and support staff who all come together on a regular basis so they can rapidly identify students and figure out the best course of action for each differentiated need. Our schedule allows for regular collaboration during our curriculum support time. Teachers share problems to solve, and we solve them together. We have powerful teachers. They are empowered and encouraged to seek out learning experiences that will enhance their practice. Everyone walks into the building as part of a dedicated team, and everyone is part of the reason for this recognition. Our students are at the center of all decision-making, and they are the real superstars who deserve this recognition for their perseverance and resiliency over the past few years. We are proud to be recognized as a distinguished school. None of this would be possible without all of the contributions from our stakeholders who are always promoting and supporting the Wildcats.
Very impressive. Who did the video?
It's gonna come up, Codiero.
That's awesome.
Yeah, right there.
Is that a local firm?
He's local, yeah.
I think that's something the town should, we should be doing, you know, for our golf course, for our own town. I mean, that's really good stuff.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we agree.
That's good.
Really good.
Jen, chair of the school committee, and Sarah, anything you want to offer up?
Well, thank you very much. I'm just so proud. Like, I watch that and I'm just getting teary because we worked really hard at the school to encourage that engaged culture change in the district. And, you know, we've worked...
Our curriculum.
Our curriculum, and we've worked really to get closely, not all school committees are working very closely with their superintendent and really acting as a team. And I think we've worked hard to establish that with Dr. Bailey and the administrators. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support. I know sometimes we come to you and it seems like really big asks, but I hope that this shows that the money that the town is providing is really going to good use.
We really appreciate all the hard work that you've put into budget and policies and things that helped us create what has been created here at the elementary school. And we'll be working really hard to push forward in our middle school as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as somebody that has two students and goes to elementary school that are actually happy to go to school every day, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good work. Mr. Gasper?
Good. Simple thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, when you're dealing with elementary and curriculum there, it's, it really is a leap of faith, and it's about playing the long game, right? Because there are some who may not see, may not see the results of that for many, many years, right? And so, you know, the school committees come and go, and teachers come and go, and they retire. So, but to do it at that level, I think, is totally, is absolutely the right thing to do. Continue doing it, and whatever we can do to support it, we'll gladly do so.
Thank you, Kim.
Right. All right, good stuff. All right, new business, school solar agreement. Sir, I don't know that the people, you know, on the town side of things have had the pleasure of getting to meet you. So if you've just enjoyed our free conversation, so maybe if you just introduce yourself to the board and to the community, that'd be great.
No problem, no problem. So, thank you, Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kelly, for having me tonight. My name is Patrick McIntyre. I joined on as the school business manager for Akushnet Public Schools at the end of August. And, you know, we've hit the ground running ever since. We've had great meetings and support from the school committee, from the town, Todd and Nick, I talk to them, you know, once a week anyway. Treasurer Chandler, I met her, you know, her first week, and we've been in touch, you know, working out some processes. And then, you know, the support from the superintendent and the administration. Administrative team has just been wonderful and welcoming. I'm excited to be here. You know, I'm working hard right now to get together a budget for FY24 to present in front of you. But right now, one of the many projects that I've been working on since I, you know, started with Akushnet is this solar contract that we entered into back in May of 2020. So let me just pull this up for you, and we can get started. All right. So this is in regards of the Town of Akushnet Net Metering Power Purchase Agreement. The Net Metering Power Purchase Agreement essentially was a contract entered into in May 5th, 2020 between Kearsage Akushnet LLC and the Town of Akushnet. What this contract alluded to was Akushnet buying allocation share of 22.5% of a solar farm and the electricity generated by the facility located at 588 Middle Road. As a result of owning that percentage share, the Kearsage company purchases the energy from us and gives us credits in return that we can use towards our utility bills. These credits are called net metering credits. The agreement's for twenty years and can be extended up to three additional periods for five years. So we're talking anywhere from a twenty-year contract to a thirty-five-year contract. When the contract was entered into, so this is where the school comes into play, the utilities for the school were written into the Z application of the project, meaning the only credits that could be applied to utility bills are the bills of the school. So whatever we expended for utilities, those credits would be applicable to be used against those and no other bills on the town. So to continue on, what we're looking at at this point in time, from July to October, the numbers that I'm working with, the Kearsage facility generated in July about $84,000 worth of electricity value. Our share is 22.5%, so in turn, we received net metering credits of about $19,000. In the contract, you know, we're charged a facility lease at 85% of what the electricity is generated for. So we get credits of $19,000, and we're charged 85 cents on the dollar for those credits, and we pay Kearsage $16,143 for the month of July. So in essence, we're receiving credits for nineteen, we're paying sixteen. You know, we have net savings and credits of $3,000. So this is great. Obviously, you can see month to month, we're generating credits. It's a favorable thing, but the problem is, these credits mean nothing to us unless we can maximize them. So as I alluded to, the net metering credits can be utilized and offsetting utility bills. So the utility bills currently consist of a supplier and a deliverer, which in the Town of Akushnet are Constellation as the supplier and EverSource as the deliverer. The problem with the contract right now is the language speaks that the net metering credits can only be charged towards our EverSource bills. So right now, we have a supplier bill from Constellation, which I'll get into the numbers on the next slide, and a bill from EverSource as the deliverer. The credits can only be used towards the EverSource bill. However, there's a clause in the contract that would allow us to put the supplier and the deliverer on the same bill and maximize those credits against both costs. So right now, again, looking at the month of July, we generated about $19,000 in credits. Kearsage billed us for those credits $16,143, and then we received bills from the supplier of $6,900 and bills from the deliverer of $6,500. So in total, our bills for the month of July were almost $30,000. We were able to apply $6,579 of those $18,991 credits against the EverSource bill, but that left us with $12,411 credits unapplied. So total cash, total bills, $29,000, total cash out the door, $23,000, and then unapplied credits that sit in there and accruing, $12,411. Over the four months of this fiscal year, we've paid $87,000 in utility bills with $40,000 in credits sitting there, still not, not being used for anything. Excuse me. So in a perfect world, if we, you know, solution number one is we combine the supplier and the deliverer bill, as I alluded to, all these numbers would stay the same, the $19,000 in credits, the $29,000 in bills. However, we'd be able to apply $13,500 in credits against our total payments, meaning cash out would only be $16,000 versus $23,000. I just have some notes here. You know, that would be a monthly saving of about $7.1,000 on average of cash out. So sort of a no-brainer. Net metering credits unapplied still exist, so we can't maximize our full credits even with both utilities under the same bill. We just, we don't have high enough costs. So in summary, because the billing has been separate for supply and demand since the inception of this contract, we've been paying higher out-of-pocket expenses and banking the extra net metering credits. To this point in time, at the end of October, we have net metering credits totaling of $125,000, sitting there to no use. Good news is, they don't expire. The only way they can be applied is when this contract with Kearsage is up and we aren't earning net metering credits. They'll live there and they continue to be, can continue to be applied to our bills, our utility bills, until they're used up.
One credit equals one dollar?
Yes. Solution, so the town directs Constellation to stop direct invoicing and default to that EverSource invoicing. So again, combining, combining the supply and delivery, which at that point, we've worked towards taking. And then the second piece is the town requests to change the Kearsage contract to remove the school from the equation and allocate the application towards other town department bills so that you can maximize the credits. Doing that, that would further allow the school to enter into any separate solar contracts that, you know, we could be taking a look at. Right now, because we're in this contract under Kearsage, our utility bills are tied into it. The school can't look at any solar options for, you know, roof, canopy, overhangs, anything of the sorts. So forward-thinking, we do have an agenda in this. We are looking at putting a solar canopy over the parking lot between Ford Middle School and Akushnet Elementary School. In order to do so, again, we would need to be removed from this application. And the benefits of that would be, the town would now reap the savings of Kearsage's deal and be able to maximize the credits, assuming between all the other departments, there's enough utility cost to absorb the credits that we're earning. The school would be able to look towards a solar canopy over the parking lot that I just alluded to, you know, with a small leasing fee that would have to be under the usage of utilities right now or there would be no purpose of it. In preliminary conversations, the solar project would generate 100% to 110% of the electricity that the school generates or uses, excuse me. So our utility costs at that point behind the meter would be zero dollars. The only cost we'd be paying, similar to the Kearsage deal, is a lease piece, which right now, they're anticipating $10,000. $10,000 versus our 14.5 monthly utility bills is a 4.5 savings over, you know, on average per month. Over a 25-year lease, you're talking, you know, $1.5 million in utility savings. And then further, we had a security and safety audit. The canopy would help provide shelter for staff vehicles, students, protection from the weather, reduce need for plowing, salting, et cetera, on that large parking lot that we're looking at. And further, it would include potential battery storage of the electricity that we're garnering, which when the power would go down and, you know, we have to shut off the canopy and everything, because, so the risk is that the electricity could go up the lines if we didn't shut off the canopy, and if there's workers on the utility poles, it could, it could send current that way. We could shut that off, we would have the battery backup. And we do use Ford Middle School as an emergency shelter. That battery backup would allow us two weeks of electricity to use in those facilities. So that's my brief presentation. It was quick. We've spent a lot of time and resources looking into this. Thank you to the support of Dr. Bailey in allowing me to do that. Mr. Kelly, Todd Hassett, and Nick all played a part in investigating these numbers, looking at the town side of utility bills and trying to figure this out. So at this point, the next move would be removing the school from the Z application that's built into the Kearsage contract and adding other town departments, other town department utilities to utilize the credits. And in that sense, they would be paying the Kearsage bill as well.
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons that the school is here on this is the contract is between Kearsage and the town.
Correct.
And so it would have to, any amendment to the contract has to come to the board. of Select.
Okay. So, the combination of the bills, the supplier and the deliverer, was not an amendment to the contract, so we, we had tried to move forward with that to maximize the, the use of the credits, however, the Z application change would be an amendment to the contract.
Regarding the canopy, have you identified a vendor for that already? Is that an RFP or?
So, right now, we've been working with Solekt Energy. They're exempt from procurement because they've been vetted out by the state. They've done a handful of schools in the area already, they've done all of Stone Hill College Campus, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, they've done a roof canopy, a parking lot canopy, a solar farm over there. So, that's who, who we've been speaking with right now and has sort of helped us sort out the process of these unapplied credits.
So, really, what I'm asking is that, first, I'm glad to see this solar kind of get off the ground, I remember, Paul, I don't think you were here, but John Roy, who was a retired teacher, he and I met with previous administration, I want to say, 10 years ago, maybe even longer, well beyond that, about trying to bring solar, you know, maximize the campus for that, and kind of got off the ground, but, you know, obviously, technology advances and this and that, so I'm glad to see this going forward, but I know the golf, we've talked about a canopy potentially at the golf course, and I know there's been some question about that as far as aesthetics go, whatever, but I think, I think we've, I'm hoping we've evolved beyond worrying about aesthetics when it comes to generating revenue and, you know, providing, so I don't know if there's an opportunity, not to detract you from what you're doing, but, you know, lessons learned and maybe provide some guidance to the golf management committee on what that would look like at the golf facility.
A hundred percent.
So, maybe there's, you know, get your, get this squared away.
Yeah, so we are in very preliminary talks, you know, we, we need to go to our school committee, you know, with the rendering to approve it, you know, do the math, find out the rates, the whole nine yards, but we can't even go that far, being stuck in this contract.
Is there, would there be, I don't see personally, gentlemen, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to do this.
Are there any downsides to the, to the, basically, the canopy, addition of the canopy? I know the battery backups are very expensive.
Yeah, so it would all be.
And you would worry about contamination being on the school grounds with that as well?
So, it would all be, you know, built into the lease contracts, Solekt, you know, again, who we're not married to at this point, would be responsible to vet out all of that, you know, it would have to go through the Board of Select, it would have to go through the zoning board, it would have to go all the way through, all the steps, they would need an engineer, an environmentalist, they would take care of all of that, due diligence, you know. The canopy, you know, really, the only downside would be is if it wasn't aesthetically pleasing, but there are options there, you know, we would have to approve the rendering before we went through with it anyway, but because it's a lease, they're 100% responsible for the integrity of the structure, the repair and maintenance of the structure, they would be bonded to, you know, install it on time, take it down after the lease was up, if there wasn't any sort of buyout, so it would be 100% their property.
Top part of the decommissioning policy that we already have in the Town of Akushnet for solar arrays anyway, so they'd have to abide by that too, correct? So, I'm just, you know, with the battery backup thing, I mean, you talked about what kind of credits we would have, and then you said that the solar panels depended on how much juice we're using, if we can get out of that deal and spread those credits amongst all the other municipal buildings, that's great, I'm all for that 100%. It's just when you talk about the battery backup with the additional canopy thing, how much power would it be generating there and how much excess would it be to fill the capacity of the battery backup versus what the lease company's going to say you can actually do? Would it be wise to have that battery backup in place if you're not generating enough juice to accomplish that goal of fully juicing the battery backup, because they're pretty ugly?
Yeah.
And they're loaded with contaminants, so it's like a storage container, basically, these battery backups. They're not small in nature, it's not like the podium you're standing at, it's not like a couple of those podiums, it's basically like a storage container on the ground, so I guess you would have to relocate that somewhere in the back of the building where you can't really see it from the street or whatever, and the costs associated with the electrical, you know, all those things have to be weighed.
Sure.
For us to make an educated guess, is, is that worth doing it? The canopy might be worth doing, but as far as battery backup systems go, that might be taking it a step too far, so that's something to explore.
Like the first inning of that conversation, right?
Correct, correct, and what it comes down to is, they're not going to allow us to have a battery backup if they, if they're not going to benefit from it in, you know, the sense of generating electricity.
Correct.
So, if we're not generating enough electricity to use the battery backup, we're not going to receive the incentives to have the back, the battery, get the discounted rate, then make a profit off of it, so on and so forth.
Right. So, they ask, really, the point is, thank you for giving us that, like, you know, preview of potential down the road, but I think really, what's before us is decoupling this contract with the Kearsage.
Well, the town will have to do what the schools have done, if we get into this and combining the Eversource and Constellation bills, so we maximize what we're doing, and we have to identify which town buildings. And so, we're, this is very preliminary and we, it's presented to the board, if you, it's going to take a little bit of staff work, if you want us to go down that road, we can go down that road.
I don't see any downside at least doing that, so I'd ask for a motion to direct Mr. Kelly to work with the school business manager and then report back to the respective committees with a full presentation, so is there a motion?
So, move second.
For those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Come back, we'll see what you can pull up. Have a good break.
Thank you.
Have you had any conversations with Kearsage about this getting out of that?
So, again, I, I can't have direct conversation with them because the contract's between the town.
Right.
But Todd and Nick have, have spoken with Kearsage of removing the school from the Z application and allocating the other bills, so as long as the other bills use up as much or more than what the school is using up in electricity, there shouldn't be any issues to it. It, it turns into a problem if the schools, the two schools are using more electricity than the rest of the town departments.
Combined.
Combined, then, you know, then there would be stipulations to the contract, our rates could potentially be adjusted, so on and so forth. But from preliminary investigation, it appears that there's enough electricity usage between all the other town departments to, to fill in for the schools.
Good, good, great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you, you all as well.
Doors open, anytime you want to come in, please do.
Thank you very much.
All in your team, Jen and Sarah, thank you very much, keep up the great work and have a great holiday.
Yeah, you too.
Item number two is the AFSMI MOA with the library holiday hours. Mr. Kelly?
Because of where the holidays fall this year and the fact that it wasn't addressed in the contract, I've met with the, the library director and the AFSMI representative, this answers our problem. All I'm looking for is a motion to ratify the MOA and to have a signed copy of it.
Is there a motion to ratify the MOA? So moved?
Second. For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three is a writ of first refusal of 1461 Main Street. This has gone through the process.
Gentlemen, how you feel about this?
It's one way to circumvent chapter 61, that's for sure. This parcel's been broken up a couple different times, right? So, I guess if, that's legit, small parcels of land instead of one giant parcel of land. We've done a few, in foggoed our writ of first refusal on this parcel, but it seems like this property keeps popping up, so there's probably quite a few more to go. Don't know how that works without, you know, really, you know, having something through planning, I guess, or proposal to subdivide or whatever, but I don't know if this has gone to planning and it's been an approved law yet, and that's what's triggered the right of first refusal for us, but there's, there's got to be a bona fide offer on the property, so just saying, it's probably the third or fourth parcel that's been broken off, this big parcel.
Has this gone through the process with the other, the other?
There's a couple of committees that have said.
Planning and assessors, conservation, I've sent letters to, and we have some of their responses there, so.
You came before the town and said you have 20 acres of land, it's got a lot of uplands, that'd be a horse of a different color, but when you keep piecing it off and saying, I have 1.5 acres, 3 acres, 5 acres, that's a horse of a different color, right? Makes it unattractive for the town to own small pieces of property, so I think that's, again, a way to circumvent.
Yeah.
Start a writ of first refusal, right?
Yeah.
And make it, make it in the interest of the commu, the town versus little parcel, so I make a motion to foggo it, write a first refusal, the board has no interest in it. At this point, we've already done it in the past two or three times, but.
Yeah, second. For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess the question is, if this is something, you know, is this a one-off with this parcel, you know, this homeowner, or is this, are there other, other things like this where it becomes death by a thousand cuts, you know, is there?
Death by a thousand cuts, is something.
And we need to, you know, try and get our head around to prevent it from happening in the future.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of large tracts of land that are in chapter, so I'm sure once, once one person catches on to it and it gets out there and.
Once we get a, once we get a town planner, maybe something that we need to look at, so.
All right. Number four, item number four is.
Did the, for, for vote?
Yeah.
I made a motion to foggo all right of first refusal, I believe this the equally second half.
Second, yes.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Notice from Timothy De Silva, who we appointed as a police officer, unfortunately, is not going to be able to take the appointment, so fortunately, we did appoint Mr. Ryan Rego as an alternate, and it makes sense to elevate him in the place of Mr. De Silva.
The chief and staff have checked with civil service, they're allowing us to do it.
Okay.
So, it's the best solution.
All right.
Very good.
He was on the waiting list, that's why we did it, just in case wanted to make it through, or this situation in a row, so.
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Rego full-time? So moved?
Second.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next item, number five, Chief Paul.
Evening, Chief. So, as it says, looking at fee and for permit increases, it's not something anybody wants to hear, is fee increases, especially in now, today's day and age, but part of what I've been tasked to do over the first few months is kind of see how we operate and see how we can better operate, and one of the things, one of the areas that I wanted to target real quick, because it's an easy solution, I, I feel, is our permit fees. The fees that we charge are an as-used basis, so when any resident installs a new oil burner or oil tank, propane tank, or if transfer of property, and most of these fees are either paid for by the Realtor or by a company, there's several companies that do smoke detector installs and they're on-site when we come in, oil burners, oil tanks, all of that stuff, those companies, it's built into their fee structure. Our last fee increase dates back to 1997 with Chief Paul Cody, prior to Chief Gallagher, and we are the lowest by far in all of Bristol County in southeast Massachusetts. Our most popular fees, which are for those, as I already stated, the smoke inspections and the, the oil burner and propane, we currently charge $15. The next closest to us is 50, so I proposed a two-step plan that I have submitted to you guys. On March 1st, that way, it gives us a couple of months to get word out to everybody about the changing fee structure, would be to increase those to 25, and then on July 1st of '24, to increase them a further $10 to 35, which would still put us at the lowest, but it allows us to become more market rate and it actually allows us to bring in a little bit more revenue into the town for something that people already have to do, that are already built into these contracted services through these companies.
And look, I, I appreciate you wanting to, you know, like not provide sticker shock, but, I mean, and I'm not a big increase fee guy, but I'd be concerned that, I mean, 25 bucks, I mean, I don't even know if that covers gas these days to get, you know, with the trucks to get out of it, to get out there, I mean.
Yeah, like I said, it's still, even at the conclusion of this on January 1st of '24, it still puts us lowest for all of our fees.
Right.
But it's better than where we are right now.
Yeah.
I did a quick comparison this afternoon in preparation for this. From July 1st, when I took over, until today, we have brought in approximately $2,180 through those fees. If we take that and use the first step beginning in March, that actually increases by $1,400 to $3,600, and then at the conclusion of this in January of '24, it would bring it up to $5,000. It's not much, but it does bring in extra revenue into the town.
Just a guess.
So, the businessman in me makes me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
As everything that we should be doing, you know the revenue number, right?
Yes.
What's our expense number to do it?
That's a harder number to dial in because it's currently done by on-duty staff, so they're already getting paid to be that, I don't bring anybody in to perform any of these.
Is that unintentionally because you're at the podium?
I specifically told them not to do that.
They listen well.
Literally, as I was walking up, my phone went off, so I know there's a call, I just don't know what it is.
They listen well.
So, that's a harder number to pin down, just because.
Okay, that's fine.
It's all things we already do in the course of our daily operations.
Okay, that's great, okay, that's, well, that answers the question, right? I mean, you don't have to go crazy and upbringing in secondary staff.
Correct.
Pay at an OT rate, that's basically where I was going with that.
Correct.
Is it a losing proposition for us, and if that were the case, then I'd have to lean on the side of Mr. Warner raising fees, but of course, I'm never into doing that myself.
Raising fees is not something I wanted to do in my first six months.
If you say this has been in place since 1997, it's probably long overdue, and we're still at probably 50% of what other municipalities are at, while we're at the 25 at least if they're at 50, so.
And that's barring them going up in the same time period.
You talk about a revolving, so if you, you, you wouldn't mind exploring a revolving account to actually put that money into a revolving?
Some of it, I wouldn't want to put all of it, or it could be something where I work with, with Mr. Kelly to increase the training line item in my budget, just because on a yearly basis, the Board of Fire Prevention Regulations produces a new fire code, so there is some training that's along with that, and I would have eight plus myself, nine staff that would have to be trained on that. They're usually four-hour classes, so it's not a, a heavy lift, but just to be able to make sure that we're at the current code, everybody's up to snuff.
Correct.
Nobody's, so it doesn't have to be a revolving account? It could be something we build into the budget, like I said, it's 36, maybe 40 hours of training time.
So, we don't currently have a revolving account set up for fire?
Correct.
So, that would have to be something that probably takes a town meeting?
Correct.
If we decide to go that route, the board decides to go that route through budget deliberations, we can get to that, but you, you mentioned it, so I'm familiar with a revolving account, so.
It was just one of the options to.
It's a way to take the money and spin it back into your department and without looking at the general fund for the budgetary reasons, it's all going back to the same place anyway, but it's.
And that's why it was just an option to provide to you instead of, of having to have that discussion with the committee and explain it.
I'll make a motion to increase the rates as presented.
Second.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Have a good Christmas, I'll see you.
You as well.
Merry Christmas, my friend.
All right. Next item, Mr. Kelly, sunrise on Wing Lane, what's all about?
This is the transfer of the conservation restriction from the state to the Fairhaven Akushnet Land Preservation Trust. It's right now held by the state and the grantor and the state wanted to transfer it to the land trust, or land preservation trust.
Did we go over this, was this from last year?
Couple of years ago. Do you remember when we did do it?
So, they got it to, CVE Solar got it to the Habitat of Society to put a conservation restriction on it. So, the consec, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, please.
The conservation restriction, the CVE Solar got the, a parcel of land you have in your booklets. I actually went over this with Biscosco, the town assessor. And for some reason, when the restriction was put on it, it was taken off the tax rules, but if the company CVE Solar is not tax exempt, you technically can't do that, so it's going back on the tax rules because they're not a tax exempt, just because the people holding the restriction are tax exempt, the property owner. So, my problem, I guess it's not really my problem, it's a concern of mine, you're not turning over, it's not being deeded to the Acushnet Fairhaven Land Trust, it's only the conservation restriction that's changing hands. And they talk about in Section C on the first page of the conservation, new conservation restriction, it does say, "With further protect and enhance the area scenic and open space attributes and the recreation, human enjoyment, and ecological value of the premises." So, I would, I would guess that that would mean that we, the public, the town's residents, would have access to the land. However, there really isn't access to the land that's been given, that I'm aware of, from CVE Solar to access either through their little parcel up and around their solar field and/or by EverSource's easement is another access point. So, we don't have access to the property, and you would have to go over private property. So, I don't know if there's anything in the deed, if anybody's done any research with this conservation restriction, but on the second document that they send you, it says, "To grantor Sunrise, to Fairhaven Acushnet Land Trust, Division of Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species," on the miscellaneous, it says, "Pre-existing public rights approval of the conservation restriction pursuant to Chapter, to Section 32, Chapter 184 of the Mass General Laws by any municipal officials and by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs is not to be construed as representing the existence or non-existence of any pre-existing rights to the public, if any, in and on to the premises, and any such pre-existing rights of the public, if any, are not affected by the granting of this conservation restriction." So, I don't know if anybody knows if we have rights to access this property and the public has rights to access this property, because it is owned by a private company. So, I mean, the restriction's one thing, that's great, and there's no cost to the town, that's great. I just think it needs some clarification for the public, and if that's the case, if we don't have access, because I do know there are a lot of people that like to hunt out back there, and if that's the case, then it should be posted, no trespassing, so that we don't get ourselves in a world of hurt with the folks that own this property, anybody saying you don't have access to it, trespassing things, and then we get our own residents in a world of trouble for trespassing onto the property. So, looks like this line they want to stop.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, CVE is, they couldn't be here tonight, but they could do a Zoom, so I have something, if you want to ask some questions with them, they are available to do a Zoom at 6 o'clock, because we weren't sure about the timeframe, how our meeting was going to work out, so that's to you guys. I could have, I could have maybe change it to now.
I'm trying to figure out.
I just think any clarification on whether or not, I mean, it's neither here or there. It's got nothing to do with the tax rule, because they're not a tax exempt, so it's not like the taxpayers are going to pick up the bill for putting in the conservation restriction on it, and I love conservation restrictions for the fact that we're preserving land for wildlife and everything else. I think sometimes we've done a horrible job with developing wetlands, and we shouldn't be doing it, right?
Yeah.
And wildlife needs a home, too. So, that's great. I just would like clarification on whether or not the public could use the land, walking trails, whatever it may be, if we would have access and permission to be on it, or this is just the private entity CVE Solar saying, "Put the restriction on it, who cares?" The tax dollars are really peanuts, I've ran through that with Kelly, too, so it's kind of neither here or there. I think it's more just clarity of, for town officials and the townspeople to know, can you go on that land without being prosecuted for trespassing? There's a lot of people that walk those woods, some people do horseback riding out there, and you just want to make everybody aware that if it's private property, it's private property and you don't belong there.
So, I, that was just my thing, I don't know, they are available at 6 o'clock on a Zoom if you want to ask them some questions, if not, we can make it to the next meeting or.
I mean, if you could hold, we don't need to bring them in, I mean, if you just want to ask a question or get some clarity from them.
Yeah, just ask the question of Mr. Gatt, we don't need to.
Mr. Kelly can, Mr. Kelly can do it and just get something in writing saying, "Show us, show us in the conservation restriction where we have access to the land, we have rights to use the land." It does say it in the restriction, but then the other document kind of says contrary to that, and I don't know if it's somewhere else in the original Habitat one, I haven't done that much homework.
I think it pretty much looks like legal boilerplate there, and so if you want to.
To base, to base the paper, contradict themselves a little bit, and I don't know if it's buried somewhere where it says, "No, it says it here you can, and then it says somewhere else, no, you can't," and it's in perpetuity, the restriction's in perpetuity, so that's great also, we just kind of want to know for clarifications of, and then if that's the case, then they should be posting it, no trespassing. That's all. Liability issues.
Motion to hold until further clarification on right-of-way and access to the public. So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item. Solar raise, an issue that popped up this week in a resident's home, I'm going to defer to Mr. Hinckley, because he.
Spearheaded.
Yeah, recognized the problem, swung into action on behalf of the resident, and so, Bob, if you would just tee that up, and thank you for really doing that.
Sure. So, without going into too many details in regards to the homeowner themselves, kind of came across one of the many solar projects that was permitted before the new bylaw was adopted. It seems to be, and once again, I am not a conservation employee, so I couldn't tell you how far off they are from correct stormwater drainage, I kind of deferred that to the ConCon, but a resident ended up with contamination in their well, I'm not blaming anybody either, but it's not helpful when a resident cannot have clean, drinkable water. Also, property is flooding out in that area, there's a lot of acreage cut down and a lot of runoff, so with that being said, I really would like to look into slowing down with the companies that are currently permitted, asking them to show us all their stormwater permits and their site plans to make sure that everything is accurate and everything is done correctly before they move on, simply to prevent future residents branding up in situations like this. People that have ponds on their property that are currently completely different colors than they were after every rainstorm, looking like mud, and then you look inside a well and it looks exactly the same. It does concern me quite a bit, and nobody in this town should have to struggle for clean drinking water. Once again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you if it was directly caused by that, but when a situation happens and you have a brand-new site offloading tons of drainage and rainwater during a big storm, and then in a budding property ends up with contamination in their well, contamination in their pond, and essentially a swamp in their backyard, we need to take a deeper look at it and make sure that these people that live in this town, that pay taxes in this town are protected.
Good. So, thank you for recognizing that and getting this moving. I know, Mr. Kelly, you've done some research, you had a meeting today, correct?
Because of what happened, staff had a meeting yesterday, had a meeting today, and included representatives from the planning board, and included the conservation agent, the health agent, the building inspector, myself, there were, the town council was zoomed in. There are a number of issues going on, however, there are basically two things that we're looking for the board to do, two separate motions. One concerns the provision of potable water to this family who needs it, and the other concerns continuing with the review of what's going on with all these projects. It is my understanding that the Board of Health, oh, the health agent was there, too, if I didn't say that, Board of Health has, and has issued a cease and desist, the conservation agent has issued one that will go before the ConCon, and Planning Board is holding an emergency meeting Thursday to review the special permit.
Okay. So, let's address the first item, which impacts the affected family.
And this is, the wording is under advice of Town Council.
Okay.
And it said, "The Board of Selectmen authorize the DPW to permit town water service at 582 Main Street and pursue all legal avenues associated with this issue."
All right, Mr. Hinckley, would you make that motion? Or at least, you know?
Make a motion to permit the DPW.
I'll turn it to him.
To permit the, to authorize the DPW to permit town water service at 582 Main Street and to pursue all legal avenues associated with this issue.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the DPW to permit town water at 582 Main Street and to pursue all legal issues in regards to this.
All legal avenues associated with this issue.
All legal avenues associated with this issue.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very, thank you.
And I would just like to add that when it comes, when it constitutes an emergency in vital water health, this should have been addressed last week. I think that this residence waited way too long for this issue to be resolved, and potable water should have been supplied to that house ASAP, and I know there was some disputes in-house when it comes to somebody's potable water and a family drinking clean water and being out in the shower, it should be resolved ASAP, and I don't believe that it should wait for a selectmen's meeting to be done that way, but that's, that's my opinion of that.
This, originally, the owner of the property that caused the problem was going to provide for the water service installation, and they reneged subsequently. The second, second motion that's needed is to direct, to direct the staff to review all special permits, to verify that all reviews are completed, associate permits properly issued, and verify proper process followed prior to building permit issued, or perform any rectifying actions necessary. If you can read the chicken scratcher.
Should have my document on, will ya? Make a motion to direct the staff to review all special permits, to verify that all reviews are completed, associate permits properly issued, and verify proper process followed prior to building permit issued, or perform any rectifying action necessary.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, can you, this is something that I've been after for a long time, but nobody's been listening, now we've had somebody, a resident being impacted by decisions by certain boards and committees and individuals of the town. This should be a simple checklist, I've been asking for this for a long time, requiring every board or committee to sign off. It's actually in our bylaws, so how this site was ever permitted to move forward the way it has is obviously somebody's fault, and that sign-off sheet should be done, and if it doesn't require a sign-off by the fire chief, because that's listed in our bylaws, just put "not applicable," check it off, and then it goes before anything, any final approval by planning's been done or any building permit's been issued. All that checklist should be filled out, stormwater, conservation. If that was done on this project and done right, we wouldn't have this problem today.
Correct. It seems that the building permit was issued before verification was done on all the other reviews.
All right. Thank you.
All right, next item. Board of Selectmen, we invited PJ Keating, President Derek Hill, to join, to come before the board tonight, just as an intro. Unfortunately, he cannot make it. I know there's some other things that he wants to do, invite the board over, so on and so forth, get a soil board meeting, but I really do believe it's critical to get this relationship with his new leadership in a better place than it is now, so I would ask that we extend the invitation again to have him come in at our next meeting, which is January 10th, as much as we'd love to do it previous week, it's just right after the holiday, so it's just not going to happen. So, I'd like him to extend that invitation, Mr. Hill, on the 10th, and if you want to run parallel track of setting up a site visit down the road and a soil board meeting, that's fine, too, but I think it's really imperative to have him here, so. Next item. Under old business. Open meeting law complaint, looks like the AG has deemed that matter closed, so we're all set there, we need to make a motion to accept the report from the AG.
No. But we need to do corrective action that we proposed to the AG, and they accepted, so I'm going to need to have a motion to ratify, validate, and confirm substance of discussion held at November 7th, open session meeting, in regards to the appointment of Megan Als as clerk to the treasurer-collector's office.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I am also going to need subsequent, a motion to ratify, validate, and confirm substance of discussion held at November 14 executive session meeting in regards to the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding for roads and infrastructures, including the Slocum and Nye Project.
So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that's all cleaned up. All right, item number four, we have it on the agenda, Finance Committee Membership Discussion, but I don't know that we need to do that, other than, we have any openings or?
There are openings, we need applicants if there is an issue because of certain attendance problems with the Finance Committee going forward at all times with the farm, so we need applications and we need to make sure that all members are able to attend.
Okay.
And I've been dealing with the chairman of the Finance Committee on this.
Got it. All right, next item. Licenses, looks like JT's and Silverbrook, is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Approve JT's and Silverbrook.
Can you just read, can you just read there?
JJ Pereira, Silverbrook Farms, 934 Main Street, Justin Tavaz, JT's Pub, 77th Slocum Streets, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all carries. All right. Regarding DPW items.
John Westgate was, and.
Oh, he's not here?
Supposed to be, but he's not here today.
Okay.
Something, I think, happened, Kathy called me earlier and said he couldn't make it, so.
Okay.
You can say he's retiring as of December 30th, but I guess he's going to kind of stay on a little bit to.
Okay.
Do some.
To help out?
Work after the fact.
All right. Next item is, hopefully we'll have a chance to properly recognize Mr. Westgate. Uh, next item is. A Safety Committee Report regarding Hamlet Street, is that correct?
Uh, it's multiple.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, number one is, it was an issue with the one-way sign of Bernard Street. sign of Bernard Street. We are looking to rectify that. Second, Bradford Street Pembroke was discussed as far as the fact that there are no speed limit signs posted, and so we are looking to do that. Lake Street was discussed as far as the guardrails, and Mr. Menard wants to make sure that the sidewalks are in before he does work on the guardrails, and as such, he has to go for permits, environmental permits.
Is he going to kick that process off, or who's going to do that? Who's going to kick that? Can you get that going?
I'll talk to him. Yes.
I don't want it to be a case of...
Yep.
Is it sidewalks?
Is it similar?
We're calling them sidewalks, right? It's what this...
Similar?
Yeah, it's just building out the road a little bit, putting some gravel with rocks, you know.
So we've done this prior with the city of New Bedford, and we got the lease agreement from the city of New Bedford, but technically the legal lien owners, water owners or whatever. So I believe the last time we did it, Merrill Lee had the city expedite that through DEP to get that approval to be able to do that. So if we could kind of just duplicate that and go.
And we have to get our Concom approval too.
Yeah, that's fine. But, I mean, the DEP, the permit, they have to do, the city of New Bedford has to do that, a notice of intent with DEP. So I think that is exactly what was done the previous time. So just duplicate it, expedite it, and we get the guardrails in.
All right. Big one is Hamlin Street.
And he's got a whole section there, and a next section, and also some paperwork that has come in. And there's a great deal of concern on the impact on other streets. Police chief is communicating with DOT on their plan and to see as far as the impact. It's also going to impact because of the tip project on the Cushnet Avenue that New Bedford is doing, and the construction for the Church Street Station. And all of that is happening at the same time if Hamlin Street is really going to extend all the way to 2025.
What's, what's Hamlin Street got anything to do with the price of peanuts on Church Street, though? It's so far away.
But it's, they're going, they're going to be also doing detours, detouring it off of those streets while they do the project. So...
It's going to be pushing traffic towards Belleville and Park.
And so if, if they push it towards us, and we've got Hamlin pushing it the same way, and there was no communication or coordination between the DOT projects.
I don't think that's...
Sarah, I was going to say something.
I'm sorry. I just have a safety concern. When we do shut down Hamlin Street, past the fire station on the way to like D's Hot Dogs, that section right there where you can, there's a stop sign, I really think there needs to be like a four-way stop there because there's a section coming from D's to go on to Main Street towards the police station. You can just go, and I've seen so many accidents, never mind cutting off this road now that goes to Main Street that way to cut through. I just, I see it as a safety concern because people don't know how that works. Now you're going to have double or triple the traffic there. I think a four-way stop there is, is going to be needed. Do you know what I'm talking about, the area?
I know what D's is. Well, I know, shocking what D's is.
So you're, so a Cushnet, there's like a Cushnet Avenue, and then you pass the fire station, right? And then you're, you go to a stop sign, and you can go straight up to a Cushnet Avenue, or you can take a left towards D's Hot Dogs.
Better known as Balls Gone.
Yes. Yes. That area. I think it's going to be a disaster.
It's what it's known as for us townies that have been around. They put that little island, dedication island, where you have to stop all of that.
But some people, there's one section like coming from D's.
There's only one way without a stop sign.
Exactly. And, and it is a disaster.
Well, yeah, people stop. I don't get it. It aggravates the living hell out of me.
Well, they stop and then they go and then it crashes.
This stops. This in there stopped, and I'm like, what are you stopping for? You went the right way. It doesn't make any sense.
I'm that guy because I don't trust people.
You people are crazy.
Again, it's just, I can just see the craziness.
It's craziness. So, call Balls Gone for me.
So Sarah, we've gotten...
I say we move the stop signs all over again.
We've got calls about that whole area, Belleville, Parkland.
Yeah.
So Jamie, did you guys look at that intersection?
We can. It was more to get, find out what DOT's plans because they hadn't given it to the chief other than this plan for Hamlin, and we wanted to see all of their plans.
And I think that would have to be involved because that side's New Bedford. Unfortunately, that side of that island is New Bedford.
Which is weird because then Town Line is on...
Town Line is one middle road.
Yeah.
Just got the flyer in the mail. So it's one middle road, which I found very interesting. I'm like, oh, that's interesting. I never knew that all these years I've lived there. And it is the city of New Bedford, so we would have to talk to them about a stop sign on that.
I just think it should be looked into because if you triple that traffic there, it could be...
Well, even, you know, we're going to call from...
I don't see whatever, I don't see how Little Hamlin Street is going to cause, for something that's a couple of miles up the road, how that's going to cause mayhem over here in that little part of it.
So if you can't go to Hamlin, you've got to go, you have to keep going straight if you want to get through town, right?
And school buses.
So you, no, not letting, come to your house.
There's school buses.
Little road coming this way. So if you're coming to your house, if you're leaving your house, right? And you normally go to Hamlin to get to Polk Park. You've got to go down Middle, around, no. Take a right out of your street.
Oh, if I took a right, I'd have to come around this way.
Right. Keep going around that way from town. So all that traffic is going to backlog at the D's Hot Dogs.
They're rooting it down Middle Road.
In the...
I know, but we're trying, I know, I get it. Look, it is what it is. But I'm just, everybody in town, most people, 90% of people that have lived here for a long time, they know the little shortcuts. And I understand what taking out one of our arteries that connect two of our major arteries, Main Street and Middle Road, out of the picture, right? We'll lose it a third. But most of us, the amount of flitangle through town, I get it, I guess. But I don't know how that train station up on Church Street is going to say, oh my God, Hamlin Street Bridge is closed too.
No, but for three years to do the...
I think that's the real question. Why is it going to take three years to do this?
Because the fish have to spawn.
All right. So we are going to be looking at...
I'll talk to...
It's true story.
I'll talk to Dan Menard. We'll get ahold of Jamie Foote, and we'll discuss it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Put up a temporary stop sign for three years.
All right. Snow update.
We're still looking for plow drivers, but we have a good number.
Can we just keep it going? Still, can always use more.
While we're on a snow update, can I give an update, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
You got a weather report for us?
I do. It's regard to a storm, actually, just not a snowstorm. I was in conversation with EverSource today over some projects that they're doing in town. And Anthony had 41B. He said there's a storm coming Thursday into Friday. Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., they're expecting up to two inches of rain and high winds between 50 and 60 miles an hour. Everybody at EverSource is on high alert for that storm. I was unaware that that's, I've seen rain, but I didn't know we were going to get 40, 60 mile an hour winds and up to two inches of rain. And this severe storm warning is going to be from 11:00 a.m. on Friday to 4:00 p.m. So we put out power pledges, just so everybody at home is aware of what's going on.
A major travel time.
It's, it's, it's Friday. Unfortunately, it's a Friday before Christmas, the holiday weekend, right? And we know that there's a bunch of people, most of us being men, doing last minute shopping because that's what we do. And we're all in a big rush to try to hurry up and get out and go, oh, man, I forgot. It could be a significant problem. So we're talking about traffic and things of the like. We're just trying to throw it out there. Hopefully, people will catch this on YouTube, Channel 18. Just be patient on Friday. It's going to be, you know, what show, supposedly by EverSource. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's helpful. Thank you. I was going to jump on Friday, so. All right. Mr. Town Administrator, I think, in the interest of time, you can use this as a, can I all read it and back it, unless it's something you want to highlight?
Yes, as far as my report, but on the back is a separate memo on emergency preparedness that Mr. Gaspar led into. And we had meetings as far as the warming station shelter, as far as planning and other concerns. And it was identified to me when I asked certain questions that we have a warming or cooling center guidelines that have never been approved by this board. We have no continuity of operations plan, and we have no emergency response plan on file. And we are going to be needing very much in the next couple weeks to at least fill some of those blanks.
Motion to approve those plans. We don't have one file.
And EverSource's warning of rolling blackouts during winter storms for both electricity and natural gas.
So that's the kick in the pants.
Yep.
We, the details, the devil's always in the details, Mr. Kelly. So speaking of shelters, I was in part of that conversation. We were doing negotiations with the fire department. Rolling blackouts for storms. So everybody's aware at home, as you all got your energy bill, your gas, ditch gas bill, if that's what you have, like I did, and went, holy cow. Now EverSource has got the audacity, after they raise rates the way they do, they say, hey, rolling blackouts due to storms. It's not a storm here, ladies and gentlemen. It could be a storm in Pennsylvania, it could be a storm in New York, and they're going to do rolling blackouts to us to feed them natural gas and electricity. Thanks, Joe Biden. That's what this comes down to. I mean, how ridiculous is that? We don't, we don't have storms in Massachusetts or in our area, but we're going to have rolling blackouts to feed other people our natural gas and electricity. Really.
Mr. Gaspar, would you like to wish the residents a Merry Christmas?
I always wish the residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please be safe on the holiday season. Be smart. Happy what?
Hanukkah.
Hanukkah. Miss Sarah Gomes says Happy Hanukkah to everyone. But please be safe and be smart before you get behind the wheel. Catch my drift.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate two Call Firefighters in our town that both took promotions last week. Dave McCrooch is now Deputy Chief of the Call Firefighters, and Call Firefighter Mark Pinyakos is now Lieutenant Mark Pinyakos. So I just want to say congratulations to both those gentlemen. Their service for years shows, and they both appreciate being a part of a Cushnet and being a part of the Call Firefighters. And I just want to let them know that I appreciate them personally, and I'm sure everybody else does as well. And one more thing, I, I have a resident request. I need to make a motion to put Mr. James Souza of 183 Main Street on our next meeting's agenda to review a issue he's having. And I have a full packet of information he's provided me, and I think it'd be pertinent. He's been asking for some help for a while. There were some legalities involved, why we couldn't have him on the agenda, but there's no more legalities involved, litigation's dropped, and at this point, I believe he needs to be on our agenda.
That a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And regarding holidays, so many residents have taken the time to light up their yards and light up the streets. I just think that is really, really cool stuff. So all you people who are doing that, paying your energy bill, your electricity bill to make the town feel a little bit more, give it a little more holiday feeling. Awesome stuff. Thank you very much. So that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Kelly?
I would like to take a moment to, this is my first Christmas here, to wish the board Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I appreciate the fact that you welcomed me here. I also would like to thank the staff and wish them happy holidays, all of them, and to the citizens of a Cushnet, happy holidays.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Merry Christmas to you as well.
Thank you.
And all of our staff, as usual.
All the Christmas time for next year.
We're going to go into executive session. Our meetings are scheduled for January 10th, January 24th. So everybody get some rest and Happy New Year. We'll see you 2023, as I said.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.